Good evening. Want to welcome you to our regular scheduled Akron Board of Education meeting. And at this time, we will have our roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
President.
Mrs. Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Bravo.
Here.
Mrs. Lasher.
Here.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Reverend Walker.
President.
And we welcome our Akron Early College student, Salam Sed.
And at this time, we will have Salam Sed lead us in our Pledge of Leisure. May we stand. And Salam Sed is a student at our Early College. She is a sophomore, and this is her second term as a Student Board Representative. And so, we thank her for her commitment and for her dedication. Thank you. We have a long schedule tonight, and because of that, if there are any unique things that you want to share as board members relating to our community and school reflections, we'll take that, but we will hear from our Student Board Representative.
Hi, my name is Salam Sed, and I am a sophomore at Akron Early College. I'd like to share with you today about the Akron Early College Peer Mentor Program. The Peer Mentor Program is where two students... (Inaudible) Hi, my name is Salam Sed, and I am a sophomore at Akron Early College. I'd like to share with you today about the Akron Early College Peer Mentor Program. The Peer Mentor Program is where two students meet and create a bond that helps both students become successful at Akron Early College. One student is an upperclassman such as a junior or senior, and the other student is an underclassman such as a freshman or sophomore. The school counselor matches the students with common interests. Mentors and mentees meet at least once or twice a week depending on their schedules. Topics are discussed, our school life, possibly the problems they are facing, and personal matters that can be discussed as well. My mentor's name was Lexis Hausmar. What created our bond were our common interests. We were both interested, we were both motivated to maintain our good grades, and we were both on top of our schoolwork. I really liked her because she was funny and her personality was creative. She was outgoing and introverted just like me. The best tip she, the best tip she gave me was to always look back at my mistakes and to learn from them. Like looking through, like looking back at my tests and correcting my wrong, my wrong answers even though I will get credit for it. Because of this experiment, I would, because of this experiment, I want to be a peer mentor when I become a junior. I think this is a program that every Akron Public High School should have because of the benefits to the mentor and the mentee. It will help students have better grades and attendance because this, because this made me feel a part of my school, and it'll probably help others feel the same exact way. Thank you.
This time, no requests to address the board. And at this time, we have special recognitions. This is National Principals Month, and we want to take a moment to recognize our outstanding principals. But before we do that, we want to just pause for a moment of silence as we recognize Debbie Muhailak.
Mahalak.
Mahalak, a retired principal who passed. And let's just pause and to remember her as we remember those principals who are here today. Research tells us that great schools have great principals. In Akron Public Schools, we do not indeed, we do indeed have great schools and great principals. October has been set aside as the National Principals Month by the American Federation of School Administrators and the National Association of Elementary School Principals and the National Association of Secondary School Principals. The Akron Board of Education joins forces with these national organizations to celebrate our principals for their tireless dedication to their students and the community they serve. We know that our principals look for ways each day to give their students the best education, and it is for this reason that we take time today to honor and celebrate them. Tonight, each principal will receive a certificate that reads, "Certificate of Appreciation, National Principals Month. The Akron Board of Education salutes you for your dedication and tireless efforts and having a positive impact on teaching and learning at the various school in which you are employed." It has the individual's name and then presented by the Akron Board of Education. And they will receive a National Principals Month Certificate as well. The Akron Board of Education salutes you for your dedication and tireless efforts and having a positive impact on teaching and learning in your school. At this time, I would like to call up the elementary principals. And as I call your name, if you would come forward, this group of leaders are charged with ensuring Akron Public Schools' children acquire a sound foundation for lifelong learning. And we're going to ask that Mr. Miller, if you would come and assist me. Lamonica Davis, the Building Principal at Helen Arnold CLC. Congratulations. I'm not sure, if you would come this way, and then we'll take a group picture at the end. Reyna Williams, Building Principal at Barbara CLC. Jennifer Lucas, Building Principal, Betty James CLC. Danielle Henderson, Building Principal at Case CLC. Tara Bruce, Building Principal at Klaus CLC. Sherri Binghamton, Building Principal at Finley CLC. Sharon Hill Jones, Building Principal at Firestone Park Elementary School. Sarah Core, Building Principal at Fire Horse Hill CLC. Andrea Aller, Building Principal at Harris Jackson CLC.
Candido.
Candido, alright. Building Principal at Hatton CLC. Tina McIntyre, Building Principal at Hill CLC. Leggett CLC. Close enough, huh? Angela Harper Mason CLC. Resnick CLC. And Jennifer Douglas Boris CLC. Our next group of administrators to be recognized are our middle school principals. And before we do that...
Find your window.
If you would turn, I'm not a photographer, but if you would turn your shoulders to me, that will help. Okay, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Got it. (Laughter)
The official picture.
(Laughter)
(Applause)
Our next group of administrators to be recognized are our middle school principals. This group of administrators are responsible for continuing to build a solid foundation that will propel our students into their high school experience, which includes addressing their social and emotional needs so that they are equipped to handle what lies ahead for them. And the following persons are Stephanie Davis Bridges. And Amanda Morgan, our National Inventors Hall of Fame School Center for STEM Learning. And we'll pause and take a picture with this group. And our final group of administrators to be recognized are our high school principals. This group of administrators are responsible for ensuring our students are prepared to enroll into college or universities or job careers, enlisting into the branch of service or are employed upon graduation from high school. And they are as follows. Rebecca Green Palata, our Akron Alternative Academy. Cheryl Conley, our Akron Early College. Hmm, I think I'm gonna skip over this name. Larry Johnson, Firestone CLC. Kimberly Sabata, our North High School. And then finally, Deana Papa, our STEM High School. And before I could call her name, Nicole Hughes from Bookto CLC. Alright, we're going to get, we will have a photo shot with them. leaders of our schools. Thank you for your innovative leadership, your inclusive practices that speak to your belief that it takes a village to help our students achieve. And your failure is not an option attitude. Now, go forth, and it seems like I'm giving you a charge now, and you shouldn't give a preacher an opportunity to give a charge. Now, go forth and do even greater things on behalf of the students and families of Akron Public Schools. I feel extremely grateful. I had an opportunity to meet with our elementary school principals just a few days ago and share with you after you had an intensive study. Dr. McWilliam Woods and I had a moment to share with you and to fellowship and to see the great work that you do. And then our middle school and now our high school principals. It's not easy work, but it's good work. And you have accepted the call to do that work in such a gracious and outstanding manner. Please note that all that you go through, all the work that you're doing, we understand and appreciate it. And we want to do all that we can to equip you to do the best that you can do. So again, thank you so very much. At this time, those of you who may have to leave or want to leave, you may do that at this time. our Akron City Council, Somerville. Ms. Borders, Summit County. We did have Judy Hill, President of the NAACP, Local Chapter of NAACP. We note that we have several clergy persons, if you would stand, who are present as well in our audience. And many, many community members who have come for various reasons or concerns. We thank you for sharing with us in our activity in the life of Akron Public Schools. Thank you for your community service by being here tonight. Thank you. At this time, we'll have a presentation, "Safety Through Engaging and Purposeful Relationships", and that will be done by Mr. Dan Ramblin.
Thank you very much. I just want to give a brief update and talk about the Engagement Center a little bit. I have the great fortune, we have the team here with me, which is Josh, and then Sunil, Jessica, and Tish, who are in the Engagement Center. And the Engagement Center is the center that's right out front. It's been a multiple-year exploration into this, and it's an exciting time as we moved into the new building, and it's great to be in the new building, and it's such a wonderful building. Also, it's a nice opportunity to not just look at the new building, but also see what the new building lets us be able to do. And the new building's been able to let us have the vision that we've had for over 10 years to actually bring that to fruition and have this Engagement Center. We've actually been exploring this option. We've looked at what's been done in Philadelphia, and what's been done in Boston, what's been done in Cleveland, and Cincinnati, and especially in Columbus where a number of us went down to Columbus to see that. And it's such a wonderful opportunity now that we have this one centralized area that people can come in and get help regardless of what that is that they need help for. And it's not just the physical building that we have or the location of the Engagement Center, it's the people you have doing it. And the four of those people that are just right over in that corner, and I'm going to do most of the talking, but I want them to get most of the love tonight, they do an amazing job helping people. And they don't just help people with what it is that they come in that they need help with, they help them with whatever else they need, which oftentimes, people can't explain what else it is they need. They may come in for a work permit, but as they talk to them and get to be, have a relationship with them, they can identify what are the other areas that they need some help in. And that's the wonderful part of what this Engagement Center has done. The space obviously is wonderful, but the space has allowed us the opportunity to get these four amazing people that can work with parents and family and the community. So, I just want to point out, that's, that's great to have the space, but it's more so great to have the right people doing it as well. And Ryan's going to control me.
You have to do the slides.
Okay. So, this aligns through District Area 3, which is public engagement, and it's pretty obvious of how this aligns to that and engaging the community. We take that really seriously. I think that, you know, sometimes people talk about that in professions, but it's actually a really purposeful act that people can do. There's a difference between just being interactive with people and being engaging with them. Engagement is the idea that not only are you connected to them and you're a partner with them, but you care about how they're going to do with your organization, and you're going to take every step and the extra step to do it, which we're very fortunate that we have that opportunity. So, that is how it aligns to Focus Area 3. Some items that I'd like people to be able to understand as we finish the presentation is, one, what are the goals of the Engagement Center? What is the engagement specialist, the Sunil, Jessica, and Tish? What is their position? And the other supports that we have in that area? And then, also, for everybody, know where you can refer families and parents to, to get some help. We've made that really, really easy now as a district, but we just want to make sure you know where to do that as we move forward. So, when we talk about Focus Area 3, Public Engagement, we want to have focused connections with parents. We want to make sure that we're purposeful in how we're doing those engagements and those connections. We also want to de-escalate. If there's a parent that's frustrated about something, we want to make sure we de-escalate it and don't focus on the frustration, but focus on what the real problem is. it and don't focus on the frustration, but focus on what the real problem is. And then come up with what are the things we have to do as we move forward. We also want to have a welcoming location for students and families. It's amazing the amount of people that have come in and have said just that. This is such a nice area now. This is so awesome that you guys have this. And it is, it's great. It's wonderful that people can come out. We at times have the entire front area filled. It's awesome. Kids come out, they color, they draw, while their parents are using the electronic registration to get their kids enrolled. It's wonderful. The Engagement Center and the specialists also make sure that they go the extra mile for the help and services that they need and resources they need. It's wonderful, the people we have. Sunil has been the football coach at North High School over the past number of years. He also worked at the Phoenix Program, which is often for students that have some sort of behavioral challenges. So he has a wonderful connection to this community and knows so many people that come into through the doors. Jessica has worked at the food bank over the past number of years and knows amazing amount of resources in the community and link people to them. Tish has worked within the district for a number of years and has worked with the charter schools and the kids that are in those programs. So she knows those programs really well. She knows, she has connections within those programs and she knows how to get things done. The other thing that Josh, and Josh is great, I'm sorry, too. And the other great thing that Tish does, which is a phenomenal talent, is she holds Josh and I accountable when we need to be accountable, which that's a challenge because we are her supervisors. But it's a wonderful opportunity that she teaches us many days that when we are doing something wrong, she holds us accountable, but she does it in an incredibly professional way. And nobody knows that she's doing it, but she's really good at doing it to make sure we do what's right, to get it done. And I think that that's an incredible ability for people to have that and do it with such tact and humility that she does. And I just, I think that's a good point to point out of the talent that we have down there. Also, it's the, it's one location that you can accomplish many tasks. There are many times that people come in to register their kids and then they also get a bus pass. And then the kid also says they want to get a job, so we help them fill out a work permit. And then we also realize that they have an IEP and maybe it's overdue and we need to connect them with special ed so that they can get their IEP reviewed. There's so many different opportunities that they can do down there and connect them. And maybe they're having a housing situation, so then we can have Project Rise come out. And maybe they don't speak English very fluently and we need ESL representatives here or an interpreter so we can have them come down and help them as well. It's amazing. It's amazing to sit there and watch the things that get done in there and that we don't just stop at the one thing that people come in for, but we look at what are the opportunities where we can help them to remove the barriers, to give them the opportunity of what they need to be able to be as productive as they can in school. So some other things that we do in the Engagement Center and our specialist help students and families. So registering for school, which the board members, all of you should be in, the entire district should be very proud that we've moved to that electronic registration. It's been wonderful. And so Jessica, I would like you to come up if you would. It's been wonderful, the electronic registration. It's been a phenomenal activity. Has it been hard? Absolutely. It's been really hard because we went from paper completion to then doing this electronic registration. So I like to have, when we do presentations, I don't like to do anything rehearsed. I like to do everything just very fresh. And the people love when I do that. So Jessica's going to come over and just give a sample of what it's been like. As this summer was the first summer that we were doing fully electronic registration, which you can imagine, a new space, figuring out how to do it. Parents didn't know that we were doing it until we first started to let them know we were going to do it, and then we were doing it. So she's going to give just a sample of what some of those experiences were like and then how she got through that with parents.
Hello, everyone. Thanks, Dan. So August was a really, really interesting month for us. And as many of the parents in, in the room here know, a lot of the buildings are closed for the month, or for most of August. But that doesn't stop the need to register our kids for school. So we had a lot of parents find their way to us. And parents, you know, across the whole spectrum when it comes to comfort with technology. So many times we kind of became a tech help area. How do I move the cursor on the screen? So this is a mouse. So, you know, it came, came at that level, but it also came to people who, we hand them the Chromebook, they knew exactly what to do. They came back to us at the end and said, I'm done. What else do I need? So we could move them, you know, to the next step and get them connected to the school and give them lots of information about open house dates and what they're going to need for uniforms and, you know, making sure that they're really ready for school. So we also had situations like a family with 16 children who just arrived from Nigeria and need to register their kids for school and didn't speak any English yet. So we were able to get an interpreter to be able to come down and work one-on-one with them and to make that experience a lot less scary than it could be. And so it was, it was really great to have a welcoming spot to make people feel safe and to establish some relationships with an interpreter who might even be at the building that their kids are going to be at. So it was really great to make those connections here.
So some other items, so registering for school, and that, that has been a great experience. The other thing is, is that as we keep doing that, it's going to keep getting better and better and it's going to be more just intuitive for people. And the, doing the registration that you're already registered for school, but you just have to update your records or update your information has been going very, very well. Managing custody changes, which we experience a lot. And there's a lot of kids that are in CSP custody. So doing that and figuring out how to do that with the different agencies that we work with as well has been another strong adjustment that we've made. Open enrollment, so open enrollment is starting in just a handful of days from now. And that's going to be electronic now, too, which is going to be a switch from what we've done in the past. And it'll be a new opportunity to make sure that we're teaching people how to do it and then having a much more systematic way of doing it as well. Knowing who to talk to in specific situations. And I would say that's a really key area that we've had to work with in the Engagement Center. So a lot of times people come in and they have some concern or have some item that they want to address, but they're not sure who to talk to. It's fortunate that we know what are the different opportunities. We have relationships with staff members so we can identify who it is to talk to about the given situation. Troubleshooting truancy situations or kids not attending school. And I'm going to ask Sunil to come up for this one. So this is a really good example because we have kids that don't go to school. And one of the things I know a lot of people don't know is, we do try to counsel the kids and the families while they are here and try to help them identify what are the barriers for them attending school, which sometimes I don't think kids and families can even identify those. And anyone that's worked in a school, anyone that has kids, you all know what I'm talking about. Because it can be challenging at times that if a kid is missing school and they can't identify the specific reasons why they're missing school. And a lot of times people say very general answers that get lumped into one area. But it's really identifying what are the reasons and then trying to resolve those barriers so that kids can get to school. So I'd just like to have Sunil talk about an isolated incident or two where he's talked with a family or a kid about truancy items.
Thank you, Dan, for the freshness. Was not expecting this, but here we go. When I first got hired, it was, you know, you know, we were going to be like this complaint department. It's like everybody's complaining, everybody's... Let's be honest, that's, that's really not the case. I think some people are very much, they don't know what to do. They, they don't. They come in and one story that kind of sticks out to me is, you know, a mom, she's crying and, you know, her child is not, she doesn't want, he doesn't want to go to school. Eighth grader in this middle school, flat out. I mean, locked himself in the, in the, in the room. She doesn't know what to do, you know? Single mom, she's trying her best to give him what he needs, you know? And I, and I got this from Josh, hey, let me talk to him, you know? So, you know, first her thing was, can you guys call the police? Can you guys have him come, just pick him up, drag him out and take him to school? Those kind of things don't work, you know? So, you know, Josh, you know, it's like, I seen him just talk to a kid and kind of talk him off the ledge and say, hey, you know what? This woman's doing all she can for you. All she's asking you is for the basics. And go to school, be productive, be grateful for that. And after all that prodding, you know, it came down to, he had missed so much school, he got behind and, and he just didn't know what to do. He didn't know who to talk to, you know? And he just, and I just explained to him that, you know, there's enough people in the school that, you know, you, that shouldn't happen, you know? So, you know, and after that, he just, you know, I'm going to put my clothes on. I'm going to go to school. So small victories. And that's what I talked to him about, just having small victories.
So some other some other areas are work permits, which I kind of mentioned, request for transportation. We have a lot of transportation items that come up, which it's been great to work with Deborah and Bill and transportation on those, to try to identify solutions to those. And then just various student concerns, Chromebooks. We've done a lot of Chromebook stuff over the summer, getting those in so the tech department can fix them and get them back to kids as well. The incredible value of this is that we have people that are building relationships with, with kids, with families, with the community. And that relationship, that connection is incredibly valuable. And I will continually point out and say that those relationships enable us to be able to have a continual relationship and enable us to be able to share information both directions from us to the family, but also from the family to us, which has been phenomenal as a school district to help keep us safe as well because, and to keep their kids safe and keep the community safe, because we can share the information, because there's trust. There's knowledge that we're not, we're here and we care about the kids, we care about the family, and we really want to do whatever we can to help them do the best that they can. So the answer to the other question of where do you refer people? Send them to us, send them to the Engagement Center. The easy answer always tie, always, every time is, if you're not sure where, the Engagement Center is a great place to start because it's probably something that we can help with. And if it's not something we can help with, we can identify the right place to help with. So it's, it's the easy solution and it's the right solution, too. And that is all.
Any questions by board members?
Yeah, thank you, just a, just a few. The first is on advertisement. And if you can, would love to hear how we are advertising this, advertising the Engagement Center. And that's generally to the public and also to maybe some of the agencies that you're working with. How are we engaging partners around our Engagement Center? Second question, if you're keeping track, but I can always ask them again. You know, we went and visited partners of ours that have an Engagement Center and then brought it back into our own Akron model. Has anyone reached out to us to see what we're doing? I would like to just, just offering really quick, I had some experience with the enrollment process online. Have to say, I loved it. It, it really was great to see all of that information already there and sort of just confirming our enrollment status this year. So as a parent, I loved that. I would still love to conceive, love to see us as version 2.0. When I actually got to the school for open house, though, I probably still had 10 forms to fill out that all needed the same amount of information. I still had to put my address on about 10 different forms and sign 10 different forms and put emergency contact on three or four of those forms. Would have loved to see that school base as still that version 2.0. And I think you said before you were working on that, but small victories first. And then my last thing is really just about metrics. And I assume that we're collecting metrics, number of walk-ins, number of phone calls, number of referrals made internally, externally. And I don't know if we're using a ticket system, but, you know, for, you know, sort of open tickets when people come in and close in them once we've resolved, whatever that is. And I lied, I had one more.
Do you want him to start answering some of the questions?
Yes, yes, after I finish this last one. Because you don't have to answer them all. These are some thoughts, some questions, and if you have something to say. But the, I would love to see as we continue to develop and improve our website, too, making, taking this model virtual so that our homepage feels more like an Engagement Center and maybe simplified and, and having that big enroll now button right in the middle.
So the, if I got all of these, this would be so cool. So the, the first part, the ticket part, I'll start there, I guess. So I know the four of them standing back there are laughing because they have been pushing me to have a sign-in sheet and kind of a ticket process. I've resisted that. That feels incredibly not authentic. And it doesn't feel like we're interacting with people the way I want us to interact with people. The number one thing in the Engagement Center to me is a relationship. I want to build a relationship with people. And so the ticket always feels anti that to me. Have we had other people look at us? No. And I'm not saying ticket process or something's wrong, because I see where you're going with it. And I do think there's a lot of value of having like an open ticket, which can help collect that and have metrics as well to, as, to it. People coming and looking at us, we actually had Columbus out here, their, like their Project Rise, their homeless group was out here. And I was telling them how appreciative we were that we came out and saw what they did. And I was also saying, it's great that we saw what you did and we made this, which I'm going to tell you is a lot better. But we wouldn't have known that otherwise. And the lady said, I agree with you, because ours feels much more stale than this. This feels very authentic and very for people, not about somebody has a number and there's a big sign on the wall that says what number you are and all that. But everybody has their own thing. I'm not saying anything negative about that. Yes, we're going to have to keep evolving that. And I agree wholeheartedly. And as a district, we've worked on this a lot. Getting away from paper is a challenge and that's a huge change for people, but we've been pushing that along. I'm hopeful that next year, because I know you felt the same thing I felt, and I have four kids in this district, really get tired of filling out pieces of paper all the time. And I keep thinking, don't need to fill it out, it's already there. And, but we're going to have to keep working on that because that's a hard challenge for schools because they're so used to paper and they're so used to, I need that piece of paper for emergency contacts or whatever it might be. So, but we're going to have to keep moving that along and it's going to take incremental steps so we can fully change that. I don't think I hit all of them, but I did hit a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Josh, if you want to come up.
If you can, Josh, come up. Don't want to cut you off, but take that mic, please. Thank you.
Are we on?
If you saw the picture up there, we work with some of our people. So we have the Safe Routes to School, Summit County Health Department, AMX. We were in the paper this weekend for the walking school bus, which is really cool to see them do that. We work with, we have a standing meeting with Metro every month now that they come in and look at issues that go on there, how to prove our transportation with them. So we are getting out there and people come in for picking up street cards. So we get to meet the, the public as they come in. And we're the ones that are greeting them and we build that relationship. And it's amazing how many are coming back. Oh, I didn't know you guys were down here. And then we do have some, what are they, what are the cards called? Rack cards for our Engagement Center. We just need to get them out a little bit better.
Thank you.
I had a kind of a question to kind of add what Patrick said. With the parents who are coming in the Engagement Center and they're not computer literate or afraid of computers and so forth when they're coming in here, how is that process happening with them and are they feeling more comfortable? And the other part of that question, is there any education that goes on for them so they can become familiar and maybe do this, maybe if they... can become familiar and maybe do this, maybe if they can get to a computer? Because some of these parents don't, may not have computers at home, but if they can get to a library or somewhere that they can understand how to go through the process of enrolling their child?
Yeah, and it's, it's a good opportunity, and all of them have sat with parents and worked through the process. And one of the hardest challenges, I would say, as a person, and I've sat and helped parents, too, it's really easy to take the computer and just do it for them, but they've done a really good job that they sit beside them and help them do it. And so, that way, you're, it's, it's the old idea, don't catch fish to me and give them to me, but teach me to fish so I know how to, and it's, it's what they do all the time, is show the people how to do it, and then also, there's little errors that happen and you don't notice them, but it's then how to look for those mistakes, too. So, then when the parent does do it the next time, or they go home to do another child they might have, that they can do it. And you're right, referring them to different places, yes, and they absolutely can go to the library, they can go anywhere, but we refer them to the library a lot, but if they're here, we absolutely give them the opportunity to do it here, and it's one of the reasons we haven't moved to like a kiosk system yet. We have Chromebooks that we give them so they can sit down in the chairs, they can stand up at the higher top desk. We try to give them more flexibility with that. We've had it where Jessica, over the summer, I know she sat down on the floor with kids as the parents were filling it out. And we do whatever we have to, and there's been times we've brought people into the boardroom to do it or in one of the other offices. But it is, but it's also showing people how to do it, because I really believe that after they've done it this year, next year, it's gonna be a lot easier for them. And it, it's not any different than filling out, and just, just a silly thing, as I've thought about it, but filling out a credit card application, it's the same kind of system. It's very similar to that or any sort of application like that. But if you haven't done it, it's still hard, and if it's the first time you're doing it, it's still hard, and it gets frustrating. And I did it for my own kids, and I got frustrated, too, but then it's noticing the mistakes and how to correct it. So, I do believe the more that we keep doing it, it's gonna become more and more regular for people, and it'll be more and more easier each time, too.
I'm sure we use other resources like 211 with United Way, sorry, I gotta face this way and talk to you, which is always really weird, but, and I, I know that you all do that. One of the things that I love about this the most is what I think is most fulfilling to us as board members, and I'm sure it's fulfilling to senior staff as well, is that warm handoff. Rather than just saying, call this number or call that number, what I see you all doing, or I've watched happen in my comings and goings, or parents that I've managed to get down here, is being able to say, you're going to talk to Dan, and here is Dan's number, or here is Josh's number. And I gotta give Josh a shout out, too, for being out there this summer as staff was coming in and clapping them in and just being out there to greet and get them in the door. Watching all of you all engage with parents and families has been fantastic, but that warm handoff, it's gotta be the most fulfilling part of what you all do, because I know being able to pass off to you gives us that feeling. So, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. And it, it is, I'm gonna keep going back, you have four amazing people that are out there doing it all the time, and they care about the people, they want to give them the best opportunity. We've all messed, made mistakes and screwed up, and we've needed help, or we just don't know what to do, and we needed help. And they are phenomenal at it, and it's, it's the thing that I, I take great pride in is they don't take the step, they take that step and another step. And so, it's not just, hey, call this person. They'll make the call. That's so much different, because we routinely just tell people, oh, you should call Project Rise. No, we're gonna go get Project Rise and have them come out and sit with you and work with you on that right now. It's a huge difference, and it's the value of having the four people you have out there and that they care the degree that they care to try to help people.
Just out of curiosity, I, you, your last slide had a phone number up there. I don't think it was the phone number, the 1661 phone number that we have for the administration building. It is not, okay. As a board member, if somebody asked me, you know, a general question, should I point them to this number, or should I point them to the switchboard, what I would call a switchboard number on our website?
Either is fine. I would always tell you, this one. I would always tell everybody for every answer, this one. You've got four people that have a lot of information. If you call the 1661 number, and it's an item that Rhonda has that's not more business-oriented, she's gonna send it to 2810 either way.
And...
You gotta be on the other side of the table.
Yeah, I know. But, so, and myself, I think I would, you know, most board members would know which direction to go with that call, because I, I think I know where, you know, if it's the engagement center, where to send it to, but thank you.
Yeah, 2810 would always be my answer. And Ms. Mansfield knows this, but my cell phone number's on my email signature, and you can all give out my cell phone anytime you want. Everybody in the district, I think, has it, and that's absolutely fine, too.
All 20,000.
Because if somebody calls, we'll call them back. And that's the other important part, is they all take great pride that my role is always to call people back the same day, but it's at least 24 hours. And I had a parent today that I didn't call back for two days, and I apologized, I, and she knows me for eight years, and she knows that's not me, and I apologized to her, and we take pride in calling people back the same day. The more, the longer you let them wait, the bigger the issue becomes.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I am so glad to hear this is not you. I'm just, oh.
You can push the button. It's turned on.
And now you're up.
You're up.
I just want to say thank you, because I see the, the different programs in Akron Public Schools, they're intertwined with one another, geared towards relationship building. The parent engagement piece, the Family Resource Center, and then the, the engagement center out here. And it's about relationships, because that's where you really engage people and get them, like you said, committed, because they trust you more, and they feel, you know, the comfort and the genuine assistance that they're receiving when they come through the door. So, I applaud you for not yielding to some of the other more sterile type mandates. I mean, there's other ways to do it, that's probably a little bit more personable, but I, I applaud you for that, and I just thank you, because relationships mean a whole lot. And I think that's something that's been missing, you know, in our whole, whole platform is the relationship building with people. We used to have it years ago, but it's coming back, and so, I'm, I'm just happy to say that for the people who are working on those different programs, to bring that to Akron Public Schools in a great, big way. So, thank you to you and your team.
Thank you. The other thing I would just add to that is this was your guys', this was, been the superintendent's idea for years and years and years, and we just wanted to do it right and do it in the right place as well, and then get the right people, and this is the school board. You guys have had the vision of the, like electronic registration, I'm gonna keep, because you guys have talked about that for years, and you've pushed that. Like, these aren't, these aren't things that some people were just sitting off to the side thinking about, they're things that the school board, the superintendent, your leadership team have been talking about for years. And getting the building was a huge step to make it happen. The, the physical part out there is huge, but I'm gonna keep telling you, none of that's as important as the four people you have out there doing it every day.
Any other questions from board members?
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And before we go into our approval of our previous meeting minutes, I think Judy, Judy Hill was out when I acknowledged your presence. Thank you so very much for the presence of the president of NAACP. Thank you. At this time, we need the approval of our previous meeting minutes for October the 7th.
So moved.
Been properly moved and seconded?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have our personnel recommendations.
Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories five through 16. I would also like to highlight in item 16.1, I regret to report the death of a staff member from Portage Path CLC, Monica Moffett. She passed away on October 12th, 2019, and she had been an employee of the Akron Board of Education for 22 years.
Any questions or comments? This time, I will receive an, an approval of the personnel recommendations.
So moved.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 21.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in category 23.
So moved.
Second. Moved and properly seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Okay, superintendent's report?
No report this evening, Mr. President.
The only president's report is that we have gotten a date for the retreat. Please give your suggestions as a place for the retreat to myself or Mr. Miller. Treasurer's report?
No report this evening.
Okay, this time, oh, sorry about that. Any committee reports? Legal, contract boards?
Yes.
Yes.
The Policy Committee met on October 14th, and we reviewed a number of things. One was equity and transparency, and what we did is we looked at the new Forecast 5, the software and the company, and what it can do for the, for the district, all the data that it can bring out and pull out to provide equity, so we can keep equity in the classroom equity as far as finance equity, as far as anything in the district. So, it, it, the new, new software will bring out all of that. So, we can even look at staffing, you know, what type of staffing do we have? How many years does the staff have at this school versus at that school and so forth? So, we're looking at that piece real, real close. Also, the policy distribution process will have changed slightly, and what we are, have done now, since Neola has come out with the new recommendations for policies, is that we will get the policies, or actually, the policies are there, the various departments will get these policies, they will look at the policies, make any corrections or, or updates they may need to, then that will come back to, get to give their feedback, come back to us as a policy. We will look at the policy committee, I'm sorry, we will look at that. Once we look at it, we'll make sure we get it out to our, our fellow board members in case they have any questions or concerns, and then from there, we will go back and we will vote to accept it, or if we need to make any changes or corrections or updates, we'll do that and then move forward. So, that will be the process that we will use as far as the distribution of policies, the new policy procedure. I'm sorry, thank you.
And we've also reviewed several policies that we've been talking about for a few months now. The first is our naming policy, and we're actually looking at what some larger institutions do, just given how big our system is. What does the University of Akron do? The University of Toledo has an interesting one as well. We're also looking at a district-wide public art policy, and we reviewed some next steps of that, and we also discussed the Resnick potential installation as well. And then finally, our dress code, our student board members are looking at the student dress code, and we've also passed along kind of our staff and professional dress code along to the appropriate leadership within the district.
Thank you. At this time, Finance, Capital Management Committee report?
Yes. Finance Committee met on September 16th. We had a number of different topics. First at hand was talking about how to engage the buildings in the nonprofit supports available. Spent a little bit of time on donor's choice. That was actually right on the heels of being at the Council of Urban Boards of Education. They were a sponsor, and we heard a lot about donor's choice there as well. And actually, each, each board member who was in attendance got a donor's choice card to give to their favorite teacher or give to somebody, and I haven't given mine out yet, so I gotta work on that. But, we also discussed the forecast and, and talked a lot about that, the five-year forecast and how it's now pointing us to the need for a possible levy, I would say impending levy. There's several options for the levy that exists for us, whether it's for permanent improvement, for continuing just current expenses or, and/or an income tax. So, that, that is a subject we will continue to talk about for, very often here for the near future, I would say.
Yeah, as Mr. Miller pointed out, and because we have such a great audience this evening, just want to take a moment to, to build on that discussion just a little bit, and as Tim said, we will be having further discussions about this. The last levy that we placed on the ballot was in 2012, which passed, and that has been what has helped sustain the district for the last seven years. As most, as everyone around the table and most of the folks around the room know, but our, our folks and out in the general public may not, schools in Ohio are on a cyclical, it's a cycle of going to the levy, asking for a ballot, using that for so many years, having to go back, ask for a levy increase or, or a levy of some type to continue to support the district, and we're at the end of that. The last, this is the longest period since the 70s that we have gone without asking for a levy. We've been very responsible with the, with the monies that we have received, but as Mr. Miller pointed out, the time is, is coming soon where we will need to go back, and so we're having lots of discussions around that and continuing discussions about how we can continue the work that we've done to be fiscally responsible. So, just want to build on that, and all of this is, we don't do anything without looking at it through the lens of, of what our kids need and continuing to build on the momentum that we've built between, behind the College and Career Academies, the I Promise School, and the work that we're doing with our partners, even around the Family Resource Centers, and, and so, all of those discussions will continue, and we look forward to getting input on those. We also, similar to the legal and, and Contracts and Board Policy Committee, reviewed the Forecast 5 software in terms of, it's the possibility of using it to assist us in determining how equitable we are being as a district. Obviously, through the Finance Committee, we're looking through that largely in terms of our per pupil expenditures, our per, per building expenditures, and what those look like for, for different groups. So, really excited about the Forecast 5 technology and, and hope to be rolling out. Got to see some of the dashboard a little bit, so, looking forward to rolling more information out to the public as we, as we get more involved with that software. Thank you.
If I could just add, on Forecast 5, if, if you paid attention here, we had two committees talk about the same software. I think it's exciting how that can overlap, not just on finances, but on the policy piece as well. I don't know that I've, if it did exist before, I wasn't aware of it, or it wasn't an easy pool of data to combine the two before, but I'm excited about what that can do for us in planning for the future.
Thank you.
At this time, is the...
We just have one tiny little thing for ours. Ours was really, be really brief, but just to give the other committees a heads up, because she'll be coming your way, Ms. Carla Chapman was in and spoke to our committee about the equity plans for, particularly for hiring across our district, and we talked a little bit about it briefly, about build your own or grow your own amongst the board, but Carla has really kicked that into gear, and she's gonna be coming to your committees as well to, to talk about how, ways that they're looking at this becoming a reality in Akron Public Schools. So, if you're an ed assistant and you have a commitment to the district, what does that look like to put you into a full-time teaching position and so on? Moving people that are within, not just our students, but definitely our students, but also...